Special meeting of the Strafford Town Council is July 5th, 2017. It's 7:42 PM. I apologize for the delay. One of our members worked at Bridgeport Hospital and had to be directly in front of us, which was a polite thing to do, to wait a few minutes. The only, there's one and only thing on its agenda, actually two things. One is setting up budget, and the other is setting up a building. Is there a motion to adopt the annual budget?
So move, Madam Chair.
Mr. Chase, would you like to re-put that, please?
Thank you, Madam Chairman. An ordinance adopting the annual operating budget for the town of Strafford for fiscal year commencing July 1, 2017, and ending June 30, 2018, and appropriating the sum of $219,490,023 in accordance therein with whereas. The mayor has prepared and submitted to the council the annual operating budget for the town of Strafford for fiscal year commencing July 1, 2017, and ending June 30, 2018, in accordance with Strafford Town Charter. And whereas the town council has given consideration thereto and has conducted public hearings in connection therewith, and whereas the estimated amount of current expenses, permanent improvements, and other lawful charges of the town of Strafford for the fiscal year commencing July 1, 2017, and ending June 30, 2018 is $219,498,90,023. Now therefore, be it hereby ordered by the town council of Strafford that the budget attached hereto and made a part hereof be and hereby proposed as the operating budget for the town of Strafford for the fiscal year commencing July 1, 2017, and ending June 30, 2018, and that the sum of $219,490,023 is hereby appropriated for current expenses, permanent improvements, and other lawful charges for each department and each division thereof of the town of Strafford for the fiscal year commencing July 1, 2017, and ending June 30, 2018, all in accordance with the provisions of the budget attached hereto and made part thereof. Resolve that. The second reading of the entitled ordinance be dispensed with as copies thereof have been received by all town council members and the foregoing be and is hereby approved effective July 1, 2017. I so move, Madam Chairman.
Okay, thank you. Is there a second? Seconded by Mr. Harden, discussion, is there? Ms. Madison.
My question is for the mayor, for the chair. The revenue line here is $219,490,023. I would like you to explain for the public and myself where you are coming up with the extra $3 million that is currently out of alignment with the budgets that were passed by a six council majority. Where is that $3 million coming from exactly?
Does Mr. Timniak have to go forward?
Just a follow-up question. Does Mr. Timniak have your authorization to do this budget? This is your budget, correct?
Oh, yeah, absolutely. It's done through the CIO's office.
Okay.
Absolutely, no financials.
I have my stuff in another room. What was the question?
My question to you specifically is, the other budgets that were passed and vetoed had a revenue of $216,000,030,000 and change, both. This current budget that I'm looking at has a revenue appropriation of $219,490,023. I'm sorry. I'd like to know where you're getting, I'd say, 3.1 million from. What is the discrepancy? What is the difference?
The discrepancy is that the $216,000 budget, which was passed and vetoed, took into account raising revenues for a $216,000 budget. This is raising revenues for a $219,000 budget, which is where the revenue line comes from.
Okay, a follow-up question to that that doesn't answer the question. You're talking about raising revenues for a $219 budget versus a $216. That's not accurate. I'm asking you where you're getting the revenue line.
The revenue comes from the tax levy.
Okay, so the tax levy accounts for, the tax levy with the appropriations that are within the beginning of the budget that you prepared with the mayor only accounts for $216 million. I can answer the question if you'd like me to. The answer is, it's coming from enterprise funds.
No.
$3 million is being, about $600,000, another $900,000 is coming out of the WPCA. There's a $700,000 grab, give or take, and there's money coming out of railroad, golf course, and other enterprise funds. Is that correct?
The reimbursement has come from enterprise funds, but the discrepancy you're talking about, the budget which was vetoed reduced some of those enterprise funds, not zeroed them out. So there was still money coming out of there.
Right, of course.
The discrepancy, the big discrepancy you're talking about is the tax levy on the households, because you're essentially raising the number you're spreading amongst everybody in town.
Right, so if I could just follow up with what I was saying, is that this particular number is based upon the continuation of all of the medical funds for any enterprise fund worker like EMS still being contained under the town, a full reimbursement regardless of what was spoken about with other members of the council, of the amounts that are going to be carried on year after year from the enterprise funds and their reserves. So therefore, their reserves are depleted, including railroad. It continues to go into reserves, and the tax relief will continue as well? The grab from the tax relief fund?
No, the tax relief fund is no more.
Is no more. Sewer revolving, the fund is going to be gone.
That was not in the mayor's proposed budget.
I'm asking, there's no itemized anything attached. I'm asking if it's going to continue. So those enterprise funds will still have money that is contributing. So our savings accounts and our little businesses that we have, let's call them that, are still contributing to our overall town maintenance, as opposed to not just the administrative costs. They're contributing to running our town. They're necessary.
And we're contributing as a town to running those organizations.
But if those enterprise funds were to go away tomorrow and were to be closed down, our town would have a $216,000 revenue, correct? Or less? Because they do contribute to town finance. Is that accurate?
Your number's wrong. $216 million? That number's definitely wrong.
Okay, that number was worked out with your office, with Mr. Khan and multiple people.
The $216, that incorporates the state revenue. There's a revenue sheet. If we could have a couple of minutes to pass out everything, there's a revenue sheet which describes it. This is our 12th budget meeting. I think I've discussed, we've had the same revenues and the same projections for months now.
Again, and you keep, well, you had a 220 projection with this first budget that was here. At one meeting, it was 218. The meeting where, the information you sent out around June 9th was a 218 budget. It had 218. Now the one in front of us is 219. So your number keeps consistently changing. Mr. Khan's number, Mr. Young's number, has consistently been 216. So that's my question, is why does your number keep changing? And where are you getting that $3 million that is two, maybe a little bit under, it's about $3 million? Where are you massaging that money from?
Okay, so I don't like to over-massage there, but you and I have already had this conversation on the record. We've already gone over this. This is the second time we're having this conversation. I've answered it earlier on that the tax levy is the increase. When you have a $216,000 budget, you'll only need to raise revenues to match the expenditures. At a $219,000 budget, you need to raise the same revenues to match the same expenditures. So there naturally will be an increase in revenue because the expenditure is higher.
So what I see happening, if I may, is that, so for example, if, and Mr. Eng is here, I don't mean to just say HR, but I see him sitting in front of me. So if HR has a cost to a specific department of X, and we want to raise from 216 to 219, what is happening is that certain departments are paying more, and on top of that, as the revenue continues to increase, we re-increase it exponentially. So we're saying that we want to raise to 19, so now it's, I don't know, X plus whatever we want extra. It doesn't seem like a set amount. It always keeps changing in each budget. So that's my question. Is that, if that's where you're getting the money, so each time we raise, we raise the allocation and the appropriation, the amount of money that EMS or WPCA or the golf course continues to pay back to us will continue to increase over time?
No.
We're taking a certain percentage?
No, I'm really trying to follow you on this. I don't understand why you're tying this back to the funds. Maybe you can connect that virtually.
Okay, so on page 12 of this budget, on page 12 of this budget, it explains where all the revenues come from.
Yes.
So if I look at this budget, and I see, and I go, all of a sudden, I turn the page to the back, and I see operating transfer in, and I see operating transfer in of about $2.7 million coming in from railroad fund, WPCA, sewer revolving, which is zero, and the FY '17, it was $700,000, EMS, gas pipeline fund, recycling fund, and debt service fund. With all of those combined, this year, it's $1.9 million. Last year was $2.7 million. Above that, there are some miscellaneous revenues, there are some things, WPCA, contractual services, all different kinds of things throughout this budget that happen. My question to you continues to be, let's just focus, let's not even say $3 million, $1.9 million that is there currently now. You're confident that that particular number is accurate to what is being, the expenses that are being incurred by town hall for those enterprise funds for those particular services?
I'd like to interject. Mr. Timniak, you have, because she's facing this not on the proposed budget that we're speaking about, but on a proposed budget from many months ago. This may be obsolete, so I understand that you have some information, but the detail has been shared with the council previously. The June 19th, this is the same budget that was presented but not voted on, the June 19th meeting, where we had all of the detail.
Well, no, it wouldn't be because the number of June 19th was 218. This is 219.
No, this is the same. This is identical.
It's a different number. It was 218, this is 219.
You came right off of the June 19th agenda. Anyway.
Okay, well, I'm just, you know, I would like to hear on record, Mr. Timniak, did you want to pass out the information that you had?
We're praying in another room.
Okay, thank you. I'm sorry, Ms. Madison.
Thank you.
Ms. Madison.
I yield the floor.
You're done? Ms. Antozzo.
Is this on?
Yes.
Whatever. Mr. Timniak, I'm looking at the mill rate on the back of our notice of the meeting. I'm assuming that the 39.7 mill, which would be the proposed mill rate, is going to reduce this $219,490,023?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
I'm sorry, that, no, I think that answer was no, right? Because not entirely, and 219 plus the other revenues that come into the town. It's not all the mill rate.
Well, if, no. Yeah, 46 million, if we're reading the same ordinance, I mean, are you talking the total? 46 million comes in from other revenues besides taxation.
Okay. This plus the other revenue.
Right, so the total is $219 million in revenue. Does that answer your question?
Yeah.
Yes.
Say, any more discussion? Mr. Khan?
Thank you, Madam Chair. The document from June 19th was not distributed at this meeting's invitation. So we don't have an itemization that substantiates either the revenues or the expenditures for the 39.7. I happen to have a copy from June 19th, but I'm not sure if all councilors have that luxury.
Mr. Timniak said it was being.
So I, can I reserve an opportunity to question once that document is available for all councilors?
If discussions don't go along.
One other, may I, I thought the meeting was going to start, or recess. I have a question for the attorneys.
About the budget?
Yes, about the budget. Recently, the WPCA met and voted on its own budget. And we somewhat probably had a pattern, the WPCA is one part of the town budget, but within the WPCA, given that it's an independent entity created under state statute, validated by the town charter, et cetera, et cetera, that budget reduced the overhead charges that would be paid to the town by $278,000. So if the WPCA, under its mandate through the state statute, under the provisions of the town charter, can pass its own budget, and it did, how could this budget include $278 that the WPCA has voted on by the WPCA board saying it didn't have to pay?
I would still think the WPCA is part of the town, and the town budget is going to impact the WPCA. Even if you pass your own budget to the WPCA, it's still interdependent and linked, I think, strictly at this time of the town. You have to one look at the other. You need the town budget.
No, that's perfect. Therefore, this budget in front of us needs to accommodate the prior vote by the independent, duly authorized by charter and statute, WPCA.
Or vice versa, yes. The WPCA would have to accommodate the town.
So we would ask the WPCA to reverse its vote and to basically say it shouldn't double pay its workers' comp, it shouldn't pay other expenses that are unsubstantiated, and should just give more money to the town because we need to maintain a particular 39.7 mill rate.
Well, exactly, at this point, the town doesn't have a budget. But when the town does adopt the budget, I think the two budgets have to be reconciled, yes?
Why not reconcile it now, given we have a preceding vote from this group that said the WPCA has its own budget? And shouldn't this budget, being the town budget, being the, you know, I'm repeating myself, but...
I understand what you're saying. I think you'd have to talk to Mr. Timniak. What else can I tell you?
The attorneys did not anticipate that question when they, okay, that question was.
It was hard to anticipate all the questions.
I did, if you'd allow me to respond.
Sorry.
Yes, I.
You yield to Mr. Chase?
Thank you, Mr. Khan. If you recall, at that WPCA meeting, when the rates were set, it was pointed out that the $278,000 coming from the town would help to reduce or keep our sewer fees at a level. At the time, if you recall, I pointed out that that also created a $300,000 surplus in the WPCA, which in fact, which in case this budget does pass, that $300,000 surplus would cover the $270,000 loss should this budget pass.
Mr. Khan?
Well, I have a few more questions, but I need Mr. Timniak. Can he come back to the room?
Mr. Timniak, there are a few questions for you, for Mr. Khan. Mr. Khan? Thank you.
Thank you for this document. There was two items on it that were typos, and I know how personally affronted we all are when there's typos in our itemization budget. Looking at the document that we just handed out for us, I see the fourth line, planning and zoning education, has been corrected since the handout from June 19th. Its account number is now correctly reflected as 6061 rather than 6081.
Do you have a question, Mr. Timniak?
Well, that would have been the question, Beth, but I just got this. You know, it's a little disrespectful to ask a vote on an itemization budget that's just handed to us after the meeting's started. One more question, Chris. Under revenues, you have $130,000 coming from the railroad fund, but there's no corresponding expenditure showing a decrease, showing an expense of $130,000 for the railroad.
So that was a correction. We went over this once before. That was a correction. If you check the book on page...
Are you speaking to the microphone?
Yeah, I said that was a correction. We've gone over this once before. If you go to the railroad fund.
Page 70.
Page 70. If you look, you'll see that transfer applied overhead, 250. And then if you go to the revenue section on page 12, you'll see that the revenue recorded was mistakenly put down at 120 versus the 250, so that $130,000 is to match that.
When did we speak about that before?
I believe that was the, no, I believe that was a meeting we hadn't met, or the mayor. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Is there any more discussion? Mr. Kadim?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Ready to call a question?
Okay, is there a second to call the question?
Second.
All in favor of calling the question, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Okay, who called the question? Mr. Barrington Posner?
No.
I just want to be clear with everybody. We are voting on the mayor's proposed budget in front of us.
No.
Yes, Mr. Kadim?
No.
Mr. Harden?
No.
Okay, chair votes yes. Mr. Young?
I have a clarification. Some of the numbers here.
I'm sorry, we're in the middle of the vote. If nothing before, it's no major.
So I'm going to vote no.
Mr. Valali?
Yes.
No. Mr. Harden? Is there anybody who would like to reconsider? On the prevailing side, on the no side, like they're vote reconsidered?
Point of clarification, if there's a reconsideration, does that mean it's dead for good, or can every member reconsider at the following meetings? Mr. Leclerc?
I'm just asking right now.
Yours is a procedure, the motion to reconsider is to take this title off the seat. The motion to reconsider has to be moved by someone on the prevailing side, that is, somebody who's voted no. It has to be seconded, and then you add it back for reconsideration. You vote on reconsidering. Once it's successfully voted, it can be reconsidered, and then they're discussing the item.
My question is, is that if it's reconsidered, amended, and then voted down again, can it be reconsidered yet again in the future?
No, it will only be reconsidered once. It can be run up again as a renewed motion, it cannot be reconsidered. It can be proposed, and then it can be filed, reviewed, reconsidered, and then it can be discussed, voted one way or the other. It's the same type of meeting, and it can be filed, reviewed.
No one from the prevailing side has asked for a reconsideration?
No.
I'm just curious how this works, if we go on and on, meeting to meeting, to reconsider.
There'll be a new question.
It's be reconsidered next meeting.
Madam Chair? Got it, thank you. I'm sorry, is it Mr. Chase, you have the floor? Is there a second to have Mr. Chase's vote reconsidered? Seconded by Mr. Harden. All in favor of having his vote reconsidered, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed?
Nay.
No.
Okay, let me do that by roll call for the reconsideration. Mr. Barrington Posner?
No.
Mr. Kadim?
No.
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 Yes.
No.
And the chair votes yes. The motion fails, five-five. Is there a motion to? Oh, I'm sorry. I didn't think he could, a reconsideration.
Probably an appropriation.
I'm sorry, the question, the mayor asked the question, could he?
No. The mayor can vote. In a matter of five-five, tie under charge, section 2.2.8, and under Roman numeral section 20 of your rules, a five-five vote in ordinance or resolution, just to say, consider it reconsidered.
I know, this is a procedure. I understand. I just wanted to be clear.
Second.
We're trying to prove.
Okay, wait, the attorneys are confirming again.
Madam Chairman, while they're looking up the answer, if we adjourn right now, we're going to be stuck with a 39.97 mill increase.
My understanding is that that is correct.
Is that what you really want? I mean, we have been trying to work out a compromise, and now you're throwing that right out the window.
Why is that a fait accompli? Doesn't the charter have to vote on it? He just made a statement.
There's a motion on the table. And there's a point of clarification, there's a motion on the floor to adjourn.
No, there is not. It was, did not recognize. I was asking the attorneys to clarify.
The chair has not issued a, it's not announced the vote yet, so the votes are five-five. Should someone want to change their vote on the motion reconsidered from a no to affirmative, would that be able to discuss this?
Would anybody like to change their vote? It is currently five-five. Would anybody like to change their vote, one way or another, to have this reconsidered? Without that, I just want to point out that, that we will not be without a budget, we will be without a budget and without an appropriation.
Madam Chair?
Yes, Mr. Kadim?
Can I speak on?
You can just tell me whether you want to have your vote reconsidered.
No, but you just said something, you didn't say you were going to vote chose one way or the other. You had a discussion here, and you didn't say something as well? Very short, very short. I don't have a comment. The budget was, the budget that was put forth from the beginning, and the others, other Democrats, and Mr. Smithy passed twice and it's knocked down. So we could have had that taken care of a long time ago, since we, since no one wants to vote with that budget. I mean, if you wouldn't be here right now, had you guys just let the budget be, you know, if it actually passed twice, so we wouldn't have been moving on to other things like CIP and different things, projects that we need to move forward, like the school and so forth. But that's what I'm saying, you know, you're saying in a heavy hearted kind of thing, like over the hills we're going to have, no, we would have been.
Just say, right now, where we are.
I respect that. I'm just explaining, yeah, I'm right there with you.
Okay, is there anybody who would like their vote reconsidered? Nothing?
No.
The rest of them want to change their vote.
Would anybody like to change their vote? I'm sorry, it wasn't reconsidered.
Why don't you just allow us to have our confidence? You're just throwing that right out the window.
I'm sorry, Mr. Chase?
Schedule another meeting, Mr. Chase.
No, we're not scheduling another meeting.
I'm sorry, is it yes or no for anybody?
They don't want a compromise.
Is there, would anybody like?
You won't let us bring it out. No, it's not.
Why didn't you bring it out? She's in June 19th.
Would anybody like to change a vote? And the answer is obviously no. Is there a motion? The vote is five to five.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
There are motions to adjourn, motion made by Ms. Madison.
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Kadim. We are adjourned. On adjourned. Mr. Barrington Posner?
Yes.
Yes.
I'm sorry, I didn't hear you. I'm sorry, I didn't hear you.
No.
No.
Yes.
And the chair votes no, that motion to adjourn fails. That's six to four vote.
Madam Chairman?
Yes.
I'd like to amend this budget.
It's not on the table anymore. Is it, Mr. Leclerc?
It was already voted on.
It was already voted on.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Is there a reconsiderate? Would anybody like to... We've already did reconsideration.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
And I'm going to recess for one minute. I just want to consult...
There's a motion on the floor.
No, I did not... I'm going to recess until 7:58. Motion to be considered cannot be reconsidered. However, there can be a motion made to suspend the rules to allow the motion to reconsider occur again. That would allow for further discussion.
Point of clarification.
That would allow for further discussion of this budget.
Point of clarification, Madam Chair. Point of clarification here.
Hold on. She has a real piece to this, which she grew up for.
Is there a motion to suspend the rules? We would need seven votes in order for reconsideration. Sure, it would be... The question is, why would we be suspending rules? It's because our rules only allow for reconsideration of a vote once. We would be suspending the rules to be allowing for the reconsider... Reconsideration of that vote again.
Can I ask how this information was obtained?
Are we allowed to speak right now, or is this just...
I'm just...
Madam Chair?
Is there a discussion right this time?
The discussion was obtained from the town attorney.
Okay, Madam Chair. Specifically, how did Mr. Leclerc come across this information? Because I've been told by members of the audience that he was looking at Robert's Rules for Dummies on his computer to find this information.
Oh, come on.
We are not doing this.
Where does it come from?
We are not doing this. It's irrelevant. Is there a motion to suspend the rules to allow for another reconsideration?
Madam Chairman, I would move to weaken... To suspend the rules to allow for a secondary consideration so that we could bring out what we hope the councilors will like as our compromise.
Is there a second to that motion? Mr. Llewellyn seconded. I'm going to do this by a discussion. No. Is there a discussion on this one? Yes, okay, discussion.
I would like to tell you why I am voting no. I am prepared, and I know it's been shared, that the mill rate will be 39.97. Our mayor has vetoed the compromises of this council twice. He has demanded power. You have grabbed for power. And we are now in a position where I am ready to give you executive power to do what you would like to do, sir. And if you would like to punish the residents of this town for voting against you and the WPCA, then that is your prerogative, and that rests on your shoulders. And I am... I have decided that if that's all that we can do, then that's all that we can do because it doesn't matter. It doesn't matter how hard we fight against you. You have determined that this is what you want to do. So if this is what the people elected in you, and they need to think very carefully in the fall what they do again, right?
Absolutely.
Absolutely.
Mr....
May I respect your authority, Mayor?
Mayor.
I thank you, but I just want to clarify some of the comments that were made there. They're false comments, but things about threats and trying to get even with people. I've made it clear that, you know, one thing that I have done is create a vision for the town and come up with ideas. And I get to see other ideas from some members about where they want their town to go, okay? And it's okay to disagree. The reason why we're here this evening is because some of you advocated your whole office by not voting to keep the town the most. That was your choice. It was a four-four tie. It was a sad day for the town charter, just to keep us operating. You had made an appeal at that meeting to extend the date, to work on a budget, to try to save. I get to see that happen. This is, we're here because of you. You wanted to be here tonight. So here we are. We don't have a budget to vote on. You're basically advocating your whole office, saying, you know what? Do what you have to do because I'm not going to make the decision. You made a comment about me vetoing the budget. You're right. I wasn't punishing anyone. I was trying to force the councilmen to make, to come together, vote on a budget that I hope all of you would vote. But the reality is, you don't have the votes to override my budget. There's two Republicans and two Democrats that don't agree with you too. So it's just not the six of you. So the whole idea about governing... I mean, this is a good example of how things can go wrong sometimes, but it also gives an opportunity to try to work together. And that was my sincere hope. And the reason why I'm here is I take my ill seriously. And I would hope to leave that all of you do as well. And it's been contentious at times. There's been yelling matches. There's been yelling at the public. The comments made against some folks that want to maybe pull back and rethink. However, here we are tonight, and I'm encouraged that all of you are here tonight to try to do the right thing. The whole idea about coming here tonight was to pass a budget. And I'm hopeful that you would still consider to do that. That's why you're here, to pass a budget. And when I met with you all when you first took the oath and won, I said to you, the hardest vote you're going to have is on the budget. And I also said, don't ever try to let politics become personal because when it does, it becomes destructive. And you know what? That's what's happened. And I think we're better than that. I think the people deserve better than that. And I truly do believe that those are well intended and that you do really want to see our town move in the right direction. And again, compromise is something that's when someone leaves a room to know it's happy, but you have an agreement in place and you can continue operating. I think we're close. And again, not everyone's going to be happy, but you know what? We're in tough times right now. Our state doesn't have a budget. We don't have a budget. We're an unprecedented area right now. So all I would say is, don't slumber this opportunity this evening. Try to get something accomplished. Because just walking away and saying, you know, do what you got to do, that's not fair to anybody. And yes, I will do what I have to do because that's my job as an elected official. But the reason we came here tonight, the reason why we're all making these sacrifices is that is in hopes that you were going to at least talk about a budget and get one passed this evening.
Madam Chair. Madam Chair, I have a question.
Mr. Tessa?
Madam Chair. My question is, or maybe my statement is this. We haven't seen a compromise. I really would hope, would have hoped, that we could have worked together to achieve a compromise. I have no idea what it is. And bringing forward tonight with two figures, probably more rate in total, is asking us to vote again on something we don't know about. We haven't seen, we haven't checked over, we haven't studied. So I would hope that Mr. Chase will give us all a copy of what he is saying is the compromise.
Through the chair, two questions to the mayor. Mayor Harkins, I guess my question's very simple. I looked at your budget, and I looked, and I worked on the budget that people call them the can budget or the young budget. And I also presented my own budget, which didn't come up for vote. I see compromise in the can, from the original, we'll call it can budget, to the young budget and my budget. I saw the Board of Ed go from 1.1 to 2.09, and with my amendment, go to 2.35. I saw cuts that were sometimes deep, and then sometime... And then cuts that were not as deep. I've seen a lot of compromise within the six. What I need to ask you is, I have told people over and over again that I will not vote for a tax increase. And I'm going to say why I won't vote for a tax increase. Because I have reviewed these budgets, and I've looked over the past year's budgets. I've looked over the munis. And I see that there is a lot of overspending and fat inside the town administration. I cannot in good conscience vote to raise anybody's taxes without making the appropriate cuts in the town administration first. I can't look at my constituency and say, listen, you might have to spend $25 less at Stop &amp; Shop this week, but it's okay because Town Hall's fine because they got all their raises. They can still spend as much as they want to spend because they got a full budget. I can't do that to my constituency. I cannot do that to the senior citizens that I walked and talked to and people that cried to me and said, you know, Scott, what are you going to do to help us? I can't afford it anymore. I know there's money in that budget that can be cut. And until that money is cut, and here's my question, until that money is cut, I can't vote for a tax increase. If I know, if I know all that money's going to be cut, that's overspending and it's still the nice to haves and not the need to have, if I know that's going to be cut and I know you're going to do your due diligence to make sure you can cut everything you can before you raise taxes, I would vote for that tax increase. Because I know you did your job as a mayor, and I did my job as a councilperson to make sure we did our best for the people of Stratford. So I'm going to ask you, do you feel you've done your best to trim Town Hall and trim the fat out of your administration before you decide to increase taxes almost by a mill?
Do you care to be someone for that?
Yeah. Thank you for the question. Also, you know, I do appreciate your stance, okay? It's something that you feel is important to you. It may not be shared with everyone in the room, but it's important to you. And I respect that. The whole... But the comments, I guess, I have an issue with is when we start talking about fat and sexism, the one thing that I mentioned earlier was about having a vision and plan for our town. Okay, where do you want to go? All right, going to zero this year. You can go to zero this year. But what's your impact for next year and the following years? What effect does it have on our bond rating? What effect does it have as a community? Are we underfunding or are we deficit spending? What's the setup for our constituents for next year regarding town services? What about our economic development? Will we got to have any? Is anyone going to want to move here? Or will you be able to provide the services that we need? That's why I vetoed budgets before me because I looked at those numbers, and it didn't do... It didn't get the taxpayers what they deserve and what they're paying for taxes. I have a vision of where the town wants to go. That budget that I vetoed had no vision. There was no plan. It was just zero. And I understand that's important to some people here. And that's fine, but that's not a vision. That's not a plan. It's not even an agenda for the future. And yes, I have stuck my neck out on things in this town as far as what I thought was important was forward. That was my focus for running for mayor, was to move the town as far as possible, given the time that I had, to resolve the problems that I saw growing up as a child. And you know what? We fixed a lot of things. And now it's time for other people to do it. And when they were in November, you have that opportunity again. But the budgets I saw, no vision, no plan. There was no plan for anything. And I find that troublesome. So as a taxpayer, you're paying a lot of money for taxes, and you get less for services. That to me is wrong. I'm trying to get the town on the right path. You know, doing just the pensions I've yet taken care of and doing the POBs, that was a big deal. But it took a lot to have to do that in the beginning because it cost us a little bit more money in the beginning, and I was going down. That's a plan, okay? That's being fiscally prudent. We're always looking to be prudent. But the minute, I got to tell you something. The minute that we can't provide a service or cut down a tree or fill a pothole, that's when you guys start getting the full price.
Through the chair. Through the chair, may I respond to the mayor, please?
Was there somebody else who wanted to ask questions?
I'd just like to respond that way, please. Thank you. Mr. Mayor, I thank you for explaining that. But at the same time, you're explaining the six budget that passed, or both budgets have passed. I asked you specifically about your budget. I asked you specifically about the cuts in your budget or the lack thereof. Are you willing to relook at your budget and find where you can cut out of your budget?
Can I respond?
Yes, Mr. Mayor.
See, can I ask you? I'd like to see it's new. Should we be doing this now, or should we have the motions to talk about the budget?
We should actually... Actually, we should be discussing this motion to suspend the rules. So we should not be doing this now.
No further questions, I'm done.
Let me take a vote on whether we are going to suspend the rules so we can reconsider the vote again, and then we can discuss the budget.